Check one, two, check three, four.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Rachel Crocker and I am the director here at the Albany County Public Library. And we're just really excited to have you all here this evening. The mission of the Albany County Public Library is to bring meaningful connections, inspire growth, cultivate curiosity, and enhance community. And we feel like this is one of those events that
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Rachel Crocker and I am the Director here at the Albany County Public Library. And we're just really excited to have you all here this evening. The mission of the Albany County Public Library is to bring meaningful connections, inspire growth, cultivate curiosity, and enhance community. And we feel like this is one of those events that ticks all of those boxes for us. We get to do all of those things for our community. And so, we're really excited to welcome all of you here. Thank you for joining us. Just want to do a few introductions and a few thank yous. First, just want to thank the League of Women Voters. This is a wonderful longstanding partnership. Every two years, we get to partner together to put on these candidate forums. It takes a lot of organizing and putting pieces together to make this happen. This year particularly, we have a lot of races in our county. And it's taken a lot of work to make all of those pieces together. And that is all the League of Women Voters. So, a huge thank you to them for everything they do. And if you haven't seen, there's amazing Vote 411 coasters and table tents that have, I'm starting to see, spread up all over our community. So hopefully, that will help us get people in our community to the voting booth. So, thank you, League of Women Voters, for all you do. Thank you to all of you in the room for coming and participating. You're really essential to this process. That also includes a thank you. You'll see, for those of you in the room, you're going to see that we have this camera set up in the middle. That is so that we can livestream this out into the world for those who can't join us in person and post it so it can be watched later. So, thank you to those of you watching online, to those of you in the future who are going to watch this. Thank you for participating in this way and choosing to be informed about what's going on in our community. And finally, candidates, thank you. Thank you for coming and for giving of your time tonight. But thank you, gosh, I know that this is grueling and this is a lot of work. And we appreciate the ways that you are serving your community, serving our community by running. So, we just want to give you guys a huge thank you as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn to tell us a little bit about how tonight's forum is going to run.
Good evening to all of you. And just because Rachel just mentioned our 411 stuff, I'm going to give each one of the candidates one of our famous coasters. Take a coaster, gentleman and gentlewoman. And I'll tell you the story of a, he was almost two-year-old, I meant last night, at Jeffries. And I told him that when he grew up, he could be a voter and he could call by using that QR code. And so, the little boy was so cute. He put it to his ear and he started talking. So, in any case, thank you to the library for all the things they do to make these forums happen. What can I say? And I've said it before, that the amount of money and effort that the community has put into making this library a first-class library is amazing. And if you go on and just watch a few minutes of the videos, you'll see what I mean. It's first-class. So, what else was I going to say? Oh, yes. We have timekeepers tonight. They're sitting here in the front row. Now, I know, as we get closer to the election, it's harder to pay attention, but please do. Jamie E. Golf is the one who held up that sign just a minute ago. And they start at 90 and they work their way down, 60, 30, 10, stop. Now, just so that we sort of break up the pace, we are trying some things like short answer questions. So, our moderator tonight might just do one of those. That's 30 seconds or less. And then, we won't even time it. Maybe a shorter question for one minute so that everyone isn't 90 seconds, okay? And our moderator will also go back and forth. A question for the Commissioner, Commission candidates, another one for the Sheriff candidates. There may be a question for all of you, the first one, for example. But that's how it will work. Let me introduce our moderator tonight. I couldn't be more thrilled. Peter Perilin, let me read to you what, you want to stand up, Peter? I know you're going to be up here in a minute. Anyway, here's Peter Perilin. And Peter is a longtime Bridge partner and friend. I used to try to play Bridge. They still play, I don't. Peter Perilin is the Dean of the Honors College at the University of Wyoming. He has lived in Laramie since 1997. You can sit down now, Peter. Rest. Outside of the university, well, I know, all right, whatever you want, Peter. Outside of his university job, he has acted in plays for the Relative Theatrics and the UW Theater and Dance Department, as well as supporting various community nonprofits as emcee and auctioneer at their annual fundraising dinners. So, you can tell, Peter has been used to standing up in front of a group and taking charge. So, he'll take charge in a minute here, but be kind. This is his very first time moderating for us. And I'll give you a few instructions about where to find results. First of all, I've been getting calls all week from citizens who wanted to know, where is the voter guide? Well, the voter guide is coming. There was a little delay with our boomerang, but thanks to them, it'll be out on the 15th, this Saturday. And once they've put the insert in the newspaper, we'll post copies without photographs and without ads, all over the place. And you can see them on our website and things like that. If you haven't yet watched the video, know that they're on the Laramie League's Facebook page, our website, the library's website, YouTube channels, Vote 411, it's all over the place. And what else? You can access the videos, the voter guide is coming out. Yes, and we still have three more forums to go. So, that'll be today's Thursday, yes. And apologies for last night. Only one out of six candidates could make it, so we didn't have a forum last night. I think the one candidate, we're going to invite the candidates to join us again on the 26th. One person says that he can, so we'll see how that goes. But we have forums next Wednesday, next Thursday, and then the following Wednesday. And by then, we're almost on the eve of the election. Oh, questions. As you can see, I'm already getting questions. Here's another one. And you've got members of the league in the audience, what? Oh, ready to write and collect more questions from you? Let me just caution you. One, don't record the session, please. We've recorded it and we reserve the right to use it in its entirety, not for political points or statements or anything like that. Also, the questions that you give us should be somewhat short and not directed to a particular candidate. So, it should be something that both candidates can reasonably respond to. And I gave Peter some questions I got online through email. And we've got the questions we asked for the voter guide. I've got 20-some questions that we've used before, plus all the new questions from you. So, we can't possibly get through them all. And with that, Peter's going to try. Here you go.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, everybody. I'm really honored to be here. And thank you, of course, to the Albany County Public Library. It's great to be in a community center to talk about issues that are important to the community, thanks to the League of Women Voters, doing their great work since 1920, I found out online today, empowering voters and defending democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation. It's a direct quote. And thank you to our candidates who care enough about what happens in our community and our county to put themselves forward as public servants. It's hard work, but it's really important, and we appreciate it. Just the ground rules, we've posed questions, we've received questions from the League of Women Voters, from online sources, and from our live audience. And we have picked questions that we think are equally relevant to all candidates and that we hope will give you all the chance to distinguish yourselves and define yourselves. In the case of our Sheriff candidates, I think we'll alternate between the two of you, who answers first and who answers second. And in the case of our County Commissioner candidates, we'll rotate among the group of four, so everybody gets a chance to be first and last. Candidates, I understand for most, questions will have 90 seconds to answer. Timekeepers will put up their signs so you can keep track of time. And if there are any questions where we want shorter answers, I'll let you know. The shorter answers are going to help us get through more topics. So, let's start, and maybe we'll start with Heber and move our way down the table, of just asking each person here, each candidate here, to tell us your name, the office you're running for, and your party affiliation, if that's relevant.
I'm He- I'm Heber Richardson. I'm a Republican. I'm a current Commissioner. And I'm running for County Commissioner.
I'm Terry Jones. I'm running for reelection to the County Commission, and I'm a Republican.
My name is Klaus Halbschut. Sorry if that was loud. I'm running for Albany County Commissioner, and I'm currently a registered Democrat. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pete Gosar. I'm a Democrat running for County Commission.
Good evening. I'm Joel Senior. I'm a Republican candidate for County Sheriff.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Aaron Applehans. I'm your current County Sheriff, and I am a registered Democrat. Thank you.
All right, then we're going to dive into this. And we've got some exciting topics and questions and all the stuff that's right in the newspaper and in our conversations these days. So, let's start with a question for Sheriff, and maybe we'll start with you on the first question, Joel. With the understanding that some training would be a prerequisite, would you vote in favor of a civilian oversight board for the ACSO? Why or why not?
Sure, that's been a big topic here lately. I would not be in favor of a civilian review board because the way civilian review boards are typically established is they need to have access to the personnel files of the agency. Wyoming statute currently prohibits that, so that's not an option. I would be in favor of a Sheriff's, maybe Sheriff's, you know, Policy Advisory Board or something of that nature. However, a civilian review board does have an extreme cost to operate. And I think that money would be put to better use for training and retention of deputies rather than paying civilians to frankly do the job that the Sheriff and the County Commissioners should be doing.
As Sheriff, I'm open to an advisory board or a review board. The way the state statutes are written, there are statutes there that limit what you can, in terms of personnel records, what you can give to a review board. But you can get, you can go ahead and have a review board as long as they're signing confidentiality agreements and you're making that review internal. That final decision always comes with the Sheriff. And that's pretty clear in terms of personnel within state statute. But I'm definitely open to either having a review board or an advisory board, talking with the community to see how they want that to look and how we can fit that within the Sheriff's Office and making it work legally and being open and transparent with the public and everybody that we answer to.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Let's let the County Commissioner candidates get in on the action. And maybe, Terry, we can start with you. If elected, would you tell us, if elected, what your top two priorities would be and explain a little bit?
We need to, right now, we need to get after a couple of roads. And there's a dike up at Wheatland 3 that needs to be taken care of. And we need to complete the Skyline Drive all the way through. And right at this point, that's, those are number one for me.
Is it my turn?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I've been pretty blunt. My two top priorities are aquifer protection, because I honestly believe that if we lose water quality, nothing else matters. We won't have economic development. Property values will go down. We won't be able to attract businesses to our community. We won't be able to grow our tax base. So, for me, that is number one. It has been for quite a few years. There's plenty of videos and newspaper articles where I've talked about that many, many times. Number two is we need to attract more income into our county. Unless you all want to pay more for services, fees, and property taxes, we need to diversify and bring in more businesses. I am a big fan of renewable energy. I was a big supporter of the Railtie Project. I know that that was very controversial. I was proud to see that the current commission passed approval of that 3-0. I was actually surprised on that. But we need to look at bringing in more renewable energy. We need to bring in other, expand our other businesses in the community. I'm off, I'm in auto repair. We've lost a lot of businesses over the last few decades. Those are big sales tax revenue generating businesses. We need to get those back. So, those are the things that I'm going to focus on. And there's this big misconception that I want windmills from one end of the county to the other. I don't. I also want to spur economic development, and I want developments to be in the right place. And everything has a right place and a wrong place, and I'm running out of time. So, thank you, appreciate the time.
Pete, you're next.
Thank you. That's a great question. And going door-to-door, I think, is a really wonderful opportunity to listen to the community, and that has been on my daily routes since August. And in those two top priorities, I have to tell you, mental health, a community approach to mental health, not a siloed approach to mental health. And we have already begun that conversation with the Board of County Commissioners, with Sheriff Applehans' office, with the volunteer fire departments and such. And so, that needs to be extended out to the hospital, out to the school districts, UW, and a community approach. It can be done, and it needs to be done. Housing, right? That is a huge issue. In my day job, I work with the underserved in the community, and housing is what keeps them, many times, in poverty, the lack of affordable housing. We have begun that work with the Long Range Growth Management Plan, planning the next mile out from the city. That plan should take 30 or 40 years to be developed, but planning where that goes, where we can put services along for housing. So, mental health and housing, those have been, those two things. I think also, when I talk to people, they say, we need to work together. That is a big part of what I have come to do. We have, for the first time in the history of the County Commission, a contract for the detention center and a contract for EMS. I think that's really important when you work with people.
Thank you. And Heber?
As Commissioner, my top two priorities are staying in our lane and providing the services that we're required to provide by the state legislature. Adherence to the rule of law, particularly when it comes to development rights and property rights. And restraint, restraint. The citizens of Albany County, the state, and in the country generally are pretty tired of an overactive government. And there's a trick that happens in politics. When you get elected, people ask you to solve so many problems, they, you think you become, you imagine yourself to be a problem solver. And maybe you are, but not without restraint, right? Not without a lane. So, you know, like Al D'Amato in New York, he was called Senator Pothole because it didn't matter. Anyone who called him, he pulled all the strings everywhere to make the pothole get fixed. And that's not who we are and what we do. We provide certain services to the community and others we don't, even when we're asked to. And so, I like to stay in my lane, have restraint, and respect rights, and run the county tight, tightly, when it comes to the financial and business part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go back to the Sheriffs, and Aaron, you get to go first this time. What are the top three challenges facing the Albany County Sheriff's Department, and how do you plan to address them?
I think the top three challenges that we have in terms of public safety with the Albany County Sheriff's Office is mental health crisis response and trying to find a better way to respond to people in mental health crisis. Since I've been in the office, I've been able to write a number of grants, work with a lot of different community members, and change the internal processes that we have, you know, both internally and externally on how we respond to mental health crisis response. The second thing that I think is an issue that we need to deal with here in town is instituting more substance abuse programs so that when people get into the criminal justice system and have substance abuse issues, we can get them the help that they need to get them out of the criminal justice system so that they don't repeat. We don't have that constant recidivism. And the third thing that I think is a big issue that we need to tackle is reducing our traffic fatalities that we have here in the county. We have a lot. About half of them are due to intoxication, and then the other half are due to a combination of usually speed, weather, and a lack of seatbelt use. And so, I think we can tackle that issue in three main areas. Providing education to the public, definitely enforcement of the laws that we have on the books, and working with our county road and bridge and YDOT for better engineering of our roads.
Okay, great. Joel?
Thank you. In speaking with a lot of employees at the Sheriff's Office, I've been informed that one of the main issues- that one of the main issues that prevents them from doing their jobs right now is leadership and lack of direction. Currently, the policies at the sheriff's office have not been updated, have not been reviewed. Your policies are what dictate how, how you do your day-to-day job, how you do your tasks. You know, you kind of have to be a master of the mundane before you can, you know, move on to bigger and better things. There's a lot of things that aren't getting accomplished in those daily mundane tasks that have dire consequences. The jail is my second main concern. They've had three in custody deaths in the jail in the last calendar year. That's unheard of. In my 20 years of experience in law enforcement in our community, I cannot remember a single death in that facility. Speaking with a retired lieutenant from that facility, he only remembers one completed suicide in the last 29 years. So going from one in 29 years to three is an extreme concern to me, and the jail will be one of my main focuses.
Okay, great. We'll move back to the county commission. Maybe we can start with you for this question, Klaus. How would you improve the communication and partnership between the county and the city?
Well, I know most of the city councilors, or at least the ones that are currently serving, and I believe I'll know most of them if they do switch around. We actually have had, thanks to the last couple of elections, especially concerning the commissioners that have been elected, we now have a county, a city council that is working with the county commissioners. And I've talked to a lot of city councilors, and they're very pleased with the direction that their relationship with the county commission is going. So as far as trying to enhance it, I'll try to be a better listener, but I honestly believe we are currently doing a very good job, the county commission, talking to the city council. And because 85% of the residents in the county live in the city, it is extremely important that the city and the county work together. The city has some great ideas, specifically about aquifer protection, for example, but the city only sits on 3% of the aquifer. Pilot Hill saves 16% of it. All four of us want to protect the water, but 81% of it sits out in the county, so there's not a whole lot that the city can do. But they've done great research, they've got great ideas, and you need to talk back and forth. And I'm friendly with all the city councilors, and I don't think I'll have a problem continuing that. And Sue and Pete and Heber have done a great job with this last commission. That is something that I want to continue. I don't want to go back to the failed commissions of the first part of this decade where they, basically, the commissioners got upset, picked up their toys, and walked away, and nothing got done. So we're heading in the right direction now, and we need to keep doing that, and I'm sorry. Ran out of time.
This is a great question. It was one of the, the primary points of my candidacy in 2018. Got tired of watching entities that should be working together, not working together, and it hasn't really been that difficult, quite honestly. We broke into three different groups, one commissioner, three councilors. I mean, we each took a subject. One was aquifer protection, one was Long Range Growth Management Plan, and then the group that I sat on was everything else. And so in that group, we hammered out a detention center contract that had never been done. In fact, we have been in conversations previous to me becoming chair of the commission of not allowing city to put their, their inmates in the detention center. I think that's silly. I think that does nobody any good. That was surprisingly easy to do. Then I realized the county had not pitched in for emergency EMS services, ever. 20% of those costs were in the county. The county had not ever borne any of those costs. Well, that was a pretty simple thing. If you're going to ask the city to board its prisoners and pay for that in your facility, you should pay for EMS services. And quite honestly, we should be so proud of the EMS services that we have today. Other county commissioners are thinking about $2 million, $3 million to, to start an EMS service. We have one of the best. And so having people buy into that service allows it to be more sustainable, more reliable. And that is the focus. I think you treat people with respect. You go look at the city, you go meet the fire marshals, you go talk to people in the police department, so that you're known, and you show them the respect that's due, and then you get back down and you work together.
Heber?
It's an interesting perspective. I have been really good friends with the city manager's husband, and our kids are really good friends for decades, and I always thought that relationship would help me improve relations with the city. And what I found when I got on the commission is that the city dominates every single relationship that it's in, and it never plays nice in the sandbox. And so, and they, they accuse the commissioners of being rednecks who take their marbles and go home, but the fact of the matter is, they're the kid in the sandbox who throws sand in the commission's eyes and then cries, and then you get in trouble when mom comes out, or the citizens come out. So the, the point of my conversation is that I've always been willing to work with the city, but the city doesn't respect the authorities of, it doesn't matter whether it's the, the, um, the tourism board, or the state DEQ, or the wa, State Water Development Commission, the city has the, or the legislature. I mean, I've sat in committees where the city manager and, and councillor Somerville lied straight out of their mouths. So the point is that on the jail, we were never going to not let the city board prisoners there. The only question was what was the cost going to be? And the city didn't want to renew the contract because they were getting their, their prisoners boarded for free, and so when the contract expired, they dragged their feet and wouldn't deal with us because every day that went by, they got to board more prisoners for free. So to, for a commissioner to say that it was the county's fault, that the city didn't, that we couldn't enter into an agreement with the city isn't true.
So shall we pass it on to Terry now? Thank you.
Yes.
Take it away, Terry. The, the question is to your, to you, how would you improve the communication and partnership between the county and the city?
Well, there's always room for improvement, and when I became commissioner in 2017, I set up a breakfast, a monthly breakfast between the city and the county. And Casper does this, and it worked very well in Casper, so I thought I would try. If you get to know one another as people, then it makes it easier to work together when you know that they have five grandkids, or their kids are in high school, and their dog's name is Leo. Well, city council didn't show up. Very rarely, there would be one person from the city that would show up. And the city even told me that it was illegal for them to do that. And I said, "That's baloney," because they've been doing that in Casper for 25 years. So for somebody to say, "It's the commissioners that don't do the job," they're dead wrong.
Okay. County commissioners, I'm going to ask you the next question, and I'm, let's do this one as a 30 second, our first short answer question, but it's a, it's a hot button. As you know, the county is responsible for conducting elections for public offices at all levels of government. Do you believe that the 2020 election was conducted and decided properly, and why? And Pete, you're the first one on this.
And so Peter, is that local elections and what type of elections that they?
You can take it however you want. You have 30 seconds.
You bet. Jackie Gonzalez and the county clerk's office have been here doing amazing work for as long as I can remember, multiple decades. For people to cast dispersions, and there were people on this dais that did, was beneath the dignity of those. So yes, those, those elections were fair. These elections will be fair, win or lose. You will not hear me contest the election, and I hope the rest of these commissioners will sign on to that pledge.
Heber, you would be next.
It's an interesting question because commissioners don't really have anything to do with elections, but I'll vouch for the clerk. She's probably done 16 elections, if you're counting every two years, 32 years. She's tremendous at it. Some of the issues that the voters had are state legislature issues. So, you know, like in Laramie, we have a lot of students here, and they may register to vote and vote when they're not eligible to be Albany County voters. The question is, does she have the ability to stop that, or do you use some sort of voter ID? And that's a legislative thing. So, so within the law, Jackie runs the election here the exact same way as everybody else in the whole state.
Thanks.
I have the greatest admiration for Jackie. She's always been straightforward and as honest as any person that I've ever known. Now, do I think there was a possibility that there were some problems? Yes, I do, but I do not believe that it came from Jackie's office or her team. They've done an excellent job.
I personally don't think there was a whole bunch of voter fraud in the last election, nationwide or even locally. Many lawsuits, lawsuits nationwide have borne no fruit. The plaintiffs have all lost. But here locally, Jackie Gonzalez, I've got to know her over the elections that I've done the last few times, especially my independent campaign. She's an awesome lady, she's got a great staff, she does a great job. I don't believe we had any problems in Albany County, and I will accept Mr. Gosar's challenge, and if I do lose the election, I will congratulate whoever wins, and I've done that in the previous elections when I haven't won. It's the right thing to do. We have to have honest and decent elections, and I believe we have them. Thank you.
We're going to shift back to the sheriffs, and this time, Joel, the first question will go to you, and I'll ask you two together. There are two questions on, on mental health. So the, we'll do the regular length on these questions. What resources, starting with Joel, what resources do you use to manage the specific stress on law enforcement of the job that they do, and to help law enforcement with mental stress challenges that they experience?
Right now, that's one of the things I'm extremely passionate about. Law enforcement has fallen short, I mean, since the history of law enforcement as far as taking care of our own with mental health issues. We've, there's always been the stigma that you can't ask for help, and, and that's one of the things I'm really looking forward, forward to working, working on. Right now, the county only provides several free office visits, and, and even those counseling sessions aren't really up to date on best practices. We really need to be working on getting these deputies some EMDR treatments and prolonged counseling. You know, you go to the first one, and you do the paperwork, you go to the second one, you might get a little background, oftentimes the third one, before they even get a chance to even touch on what's bothering them. So regardless of how this election goes, that's something I'm going to stay involved in and, and keep working on for our deputies and our community.
So our deputies, in their day-to-day duties, duties when they go out, a lot of the calls that we have are traumatic and are stressful, and deputies are, are humans as well. And so what I've done as sheriff, just got done writing a grant that we expect to get here in the next month to supplement what the county already provides in terms of mental health services. So we actually have two mental health services, one that's through the health insurance, and then a supplemental one that's tailored towards law enforcement, where our law enforcement can go anonymously and, and get help from a number of different agencies within the county. The grant that I have will provide more funding for critical incident debriefs, definitely for the more traumatic calls that we have to go to, and then provide long-term services for those deputies as well. We're also in the process of creating a peer support group for our deputies. Not everybody needs to go to a group session, not everybody likes to go to individual sessions, and so we want to give that peer support group as well, so that when our deputies come across something traumatic, we can provide services that best suits them, so that they can get the help that they need and then continue to have a long career in this field.
Great, and here is another mental health focused question from a different perspective, and Erin, you can start on this one. This question reads, "Often jails are used as a holding cell for people experiencing mental health crises. How have you, or how do you plan to specifically address the issue of mental health among incarcerated people in the Albany County Detention Center?"
That was one of the big issues that, that I saw needed fixed when I came into the program, came into the sheriff's office, and so the medical provider that we had within the jail wasn't providing good services. They had a few people that were practicing without a license, and so we went with a more professional mental health provider there in the facility that can provide all kinds of medical services on there as well. We've brought in outside mental health services for people in the jail as well, and then we have a lot of different referral services that we use for people that are incarcerated, so that we're not literally just kicking out, out the door without anything provided for them and to fend on their own, and so that they can get into some of the community programs that we have through VOA Peak Wellness, our gatekeepers program that we have in the county, so that they can continue receiving those services. So we've also worked really hard to set things up to where deputies have, have those referral services available to them, so that when they go out onto a call, they don't necessarily need to make an arrest to get, get help to people with mental health crisis. They can refer them to our hospital and, and other places where they can get much better help than what we can provide here in law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. We'll return to the county commissioners, and Heber, we're back to you at the top of the, at the top of the. Oh, I, I, Joel, I apologize.
So it's, it's my understanding that since both the mental health services and medical services have switched to this new provider in the jail, not only does that service cost approximately triple times the amount of the old providers, which were local, it's also not working out well. The inmates are not receiving adequate services, which would be evident by the deaths we've had in the jail. We need to do better monitoring the inmates, both mental and physical health, and that's, that comes down to training and policies and making sure that we have services that are actually being provided, that we have nursing staff and mental health staff that shows up for shifts when they're supposed to be there, that they're there, you know, for the amount of money the county's paying, they should be there 24 hours a day, and that's not happening right now.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to the county commissioners. We'll start with you, Heber. What specific ideas do you have for increased or decreased regulations that would benefit the community?
Well, I, our regulations aren't bad. It's, it's, the thing that I think the city council and the current commission struggles with is following our own regulations. Property rights are inherent to the, to a landowner, and, and the regulations are a contract that basically limit the extent that the government can, you know, act. So, so I don't, when I make rulings, I make them based on the rule of law, not on my feelings or what color I think the building should be, or whether I think it's good for that person to do that with their property. So right now, we have an issue of certainty. Local, local investors, local people who want to improve their property, they can't, they don't know how to start down that road because they get in the process, and the, the bureaucrats and elected officials ask them to do things that aren't in the regulations. So it's impossible to run a pro forma, you know, to figure out what your cost and return on investment are going to be if you don't have that certainty. So the first thing that we need to do, we don't need to increase or decrease our regulations, we need to actually follow them. It's not very nice to have somebody come to you with their hat in their hand and beg you for proper application of the rule of law.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
I think it's a general rule that regulations... I think it's a general rule that regulations for development in the county prior to the latest fiasco that came from the county commission were, were pretty good. But the county commission has to follow the rule of law and they have to follow the procedure. They can't just go out winging it because there are regulations in place and they have to follow the regulations. If they expect developers and landowners to follow the regulations, then they also must follow the regulations. And where they go and they do not follow the rule of law and procedure, where they skip over the planning and zoning commission, that is terrible. That is a, just an awful blatant kick in the teeth to the planning and zoning and against state law. So I think that, and, and in this little conversation, I'm not talking about Heber because Heber's been really good. And, but it's the, the progressive side of the city council that does not follow the rule and the procedure.
Take it away, Klaus.
That is a very good question. It's something I've heard a lot about when I've been going door to door. I hear a lot about it when customers come into my shop. Property rights is, are not absolute. You do, and I'm a big supporter of property rights, I own property, but you don't have the right to put a development on your piece of property that's going to endanger the health of the community. You do not have that. Freedom of speech is a right, but it is not absolute. Ask Alex Jones how much freedom of speech is costing him. So I believe in strengthening the protections of the aquifer. I don't want to prohibit anybody from developing, but we've got to put development in the right place. And if you live on top of a fragile area that is susceptible to contamination, you've got to be a good steward of the land. You just can't develop willy-nilly and just put everything everywhere that you want to. And as far as the people that live out in the rural part of the county, I've heard a lot of talk about, well, for years, I've had good well pressure. Now I have this development right next to me and my well is getting lower pressure. I'm going to have to drill another well even deeper. Mr. Heber might be able to talk about that. Maybe not. He plants septic systems. But anyway, we've got to be cognitive of protecting our water. That is main. That's a thing I want to strengthen. I don't know if there's any regulations I want to lessen, but one of the big problems that we do have with the regulations that are currently on the book is code enforcement, whether that is with the city getting their codes enforced inside the city or in the county getting our regulations and codes enforced outside the county. We need to hire code enforcers to enforce the rules that are already on the book. Thank you.
So I'm thinking of two regulations right now that I'd like to put in. All commissioners should show up on time and attend meetings. That's a regulation that, that Mr. Richardson couldn't make. And I'd also like to put in another one where sitting chair of commissions can't speak at militia meetings. And that's one that Commissioner, former Commissioner Jones couldn't make. But seriously, right? There is some regulation that could happen. For instance, there are trailer courts being bought out by out-of-state interests that are slapping water meters on poor people and charging them water rates, right? Totally nonsensical, nonsensical water rates. Now that's not fair, right? And what, what do we do in government but to try to, to even the, the power, right? So those people don't have the ability to hire an attorney. Can we do something to make that fair, right? I don't think that, that anybody in this room would say it's all right for a Colorado entity to come into a trailer court, put on water meters and start charging for water that they get for free. And so that is something that we need to address through our Planning and Zoning Commission in the coming next few years.
Okay. Let's do a couple more questions, then we'll take a short break and I can process some of these questions that have come in from, from the audience. Let's go to our sheriffs. And Joel, we'll start with you. This one's on budget. What is the top budget challenge to the Albany County Sheriff's Office? Would you streamline expenses or what other priorities do you have?
Sure. And, and not being in there, that's kind of a difficult one for me to answer. I have requested the budget from the sheriff's office, have not received it yet. I am aware right now that their training budget is only $45,000. That's about $20,000 less than the police department gets allocated to their training So that's a concern for me. They have approximately the same amount of sworn officers, both if you combine, you know, the patrol deputies and the jailers. So their training budgets should be about the same. So, and a lot of the issues we've seen in the past few years with our deputies are training-related. They need more frequent, more realistic and ongoing training to be able to do their jobs and provide a better service for our community.
Two of the top budget challenges that we have overall coming in, the first one that we have for, first and foremost is the amount of money coming in that we can divvy out for competitive salaries for our deputies. We've been able to do that with some excess money that we had last year, trying to basically recruit and retain our deputies. We've done a pretty good job so far, but as time goes by, we're going to end up falling behind if we can't increase those salaries. Second big thing that we have coming in is, is training. Our training budget is fairly low. We've been able to, to stretch that dollar as much as we can, utilize a lot of the free trainings that's provided throughout the state to make sure that our deputies are fully trained, ready to go. And we've had to utilize a lot of different grant opportunities to supplement that budget for training so that we can send people both in-state and out-of-state to get all the training that they need as well. And so those are, those are definitely those challenges that we have. We've been able to find a lot of solutions for them, but definitely would like to see an increase in that budget if possible.
Thank you. We'll go back to the county commission. Terry, this question is, you get to kick us off here. How do you weigh the importance of the water quality of the Casper Aquifer in relation to the rights of the people who own land atop the resource?
Probably the people that have the greatest interest in making sure that the water is good is the people that live above the aquifer. And they're drawing their water directly out of the aquifer and they are not treating it. So it is of the highest importance that that water is good for both themselves, their families and their grandchildren and, and visitors. And to imply that people that live on the top of the aquifer don't care about the aquifer is absolutely incorrect. So what was the rest of the question?
I think that was, it was how you, you weigh the importance of the water quality of the aquifer in relationship to the rights of those folks who own the land on top of it.
And the people on the top of the aquifer have the right to the highest and best use of their land. And what I believe is actually happening here, because we actually have very good water, have good water and have not had any contaminated wells, is this is indeed a control of those people. They're trying to take away people's capital and control them and say, you can't live in a nice house outside of town.
Okay, so we'll go to Klaus. Thank you. Yes. May we, may we finish the question? Jamie, okay, yeah. Take it away, Klaus.
Okay. If you haven't guessed, water is one of my main topics. I don't want to kick anybody out of the county. I don't want anybody to lose their property. And to say that we don't have a problem on the aquifer is just plain naive. You guys need to read some of the reports that have been done over the last 50 years. We have wellheads that have tested beyond the federal DEQ standard of 10 parts per million. Once you exceed that, you exceed safe drinking water. We've exceeded that a few times. We need more wellhead testing. And we have people that live on the aquifer, they don't want to drink their neighbor's byproducts, I'll just phrase it that way. They want to have clean water for them and their kids, but a lot of them are on fixed incomes and they don't have the money to replace their old antique septic tanks that are 40, 50 years old that are leaking and leaching into our aquifer. So the county commission needs to find some resources to help people that don't have the means to get their septic tanks replaced and not that they have to sell their property and lose their land. I don't think Pete wants that either. But we have to protect the drinking water for the majority of the people that live in Laramie. 50% of the water comes from the aquifer. Hey, this is a big news flash. Everybody living in the city, you live in the county. So this is important to everybody. I don't want to stop development out in the county. There's plenty of places to develop out in the county where Mr. Heber can plant his septic tanks that's not going to endanger our drinking water. So this is something that's a fear tactic, that property rights are being taken and that the commissioners are going to take their property away from them. That's just BS.
Pete.
It's a great question. And just to preface it by saying that nobody wants to injure the groundwater, right? Nobody really wants to do that. And so you, you run the risk of, of doing something by not doing anything at all. We do know that there are wells that are above the safe drinking water standard. We do know that. They're downstream, right? But we know what happens if you continue to do that. I would point people to the Casper Aquifer Protection Draft that are out right now, page 19 and 20 in the executive summary. They will tell you that it's a great resource, that it's wonderful and it's recharge, but it's incredibly fragile. So you make some common sense approaches to it. And then you say to those people that live there who have no intent of harming it, we have put some money aside to help you retrofit your septic system. And we have. We have put $400,000 of ARP money aside, waiting for the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan to be finished, for that process to be done. And then there'll be a grant program available for people who want to upgrade their septic system so that it won't cost them a dime. And so I think it's really important to take the politics out of the issue and say, here's a solution. You might not like the solution, but how is a person harmed by that solution, right? They get a better septic system, the county pays the difference, and we all enjoy cleaner water. It's 55% of the water for over 37,000 people. We all have a vested interest in this.
Heber.
You know, Mark Twain said there are lies, damn lies, and statistics. What, what I'll say is that those two things aren't mutually exclusive, property rights and water quality. The, the aquifer fragility and vulnerability has been overstated and it's been done by higher policy. It's a cottage industry here. What, what I'll say is that, and I, and it's pretty rich hearing people talk about septics who don't know how septics work. The fact of the matter is they leach less and less the older they get. So a 40, 50-year-old clunker junker septic, when it stops leaching, isn't threatening the aqua, aquifer, it's threatening your basement. But I'll come to your shop and get some blinker fluid pretty soon. The, the wells in the aquifer that, that have been, that have tested higher, aren't completed. In other words, they, they aren't cased, they aren't sealed to the production area. So there's no plume out in the aquifer where you see areas of low, lower concentration and building concentration. You'll see pristine water with one hot well in it, with all surrounded by pristine water. So there are different layers of the aquifer, different members of it. And if you drill to the shallowest layer 70 years ago, and you only case your well 15 feet down, the annulus of the well becomes the path for the, the pollution. So the devil's in the details. The development that's happening on the aquifer is not damaging the aquifer. The people who, and nobody's drinking anybody else's pee, and, and I know how septic systems work. So, and I, and the fact of the matter is I don't care where people build. I don't need septics on the aquifer. I'm just a businessman and I go where my customers call me to. I don't have an agenda on that.
Thank you. We're going to take a short break and I, but I will give the, all the candidates a heads up that when we reconvene, I'm going to give you a freebie, a one-minute freebie, and we'll start with Erin and work our way back down the table. One minute to just have a free response, something you haven't been able to say yet or respond to something that someone else has said. So let's take a quick break. All right, everybody's, everybody's back. So let's reconvene. And we'll start with that one minute of freebie and we'll, we'll keep everybody to one minute, but you've got one minute to go wherever you'd like. Erin, you may begin.
Thank you. I think the first thing I'd like to address, my opponent brought up is we've, we have had a few, a few deaths, three deaths, encosted deaths in the jail. Two unfortunately were attempted suicides where they were given aid and then succumbed to their injuries later on in the hospital. And one, we had an inmate introduce fentanyl into our jail. And that's why you hear me talk a lot about mental health crisis response and substance abuse response, definitely within the community and within our jail. response, definitely within the community and within our jail as well. We know that this is a problem in our community, and we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that our community stays safe, our inmates stay safe. And so everything that you've seen me do here in the jail, instituting body scanners, changing our policies, getting mental health providers, is definitely at that route to where we're doing everything we can to increase public safety of people both inside and outside of jail.
Thank you.
I just wanted to back up a little bit to the question about the sheriff's department budget. And Aaron indicated that the reason they can't hire people right now is because they can't afford to pay them a decent salary. Actually, their starting salary for the sheriff's office is $50,000 for a new hire, which is, I believe the police department's starting salary is $46,000. So the salary's not the reason they're not able to hire quality applicants at the sheriff's office. There's a culture that needs to be changed. They need to be proud of where they work. They need to feel like they're part of the sheriff's office and they have buy-in. Otherwise, no matter how much you pay these guys, they're not going to want to work there.
You know, I think people have lost faith in politics because people tell them, when they're running, what they're going to do, and then they don't do it. In 2018, I said to you all that I would work on water. I said I would work with the city and the county together, and that I'd bring a meeting online, and I'd move it tonight when most people don't work, so they could attend. Done, done, and done. Now, those things, you have to get a little bit lucky, right? Commissioner Rivera had to get elected for those things to get across the line. And so I think if you tell people what you're going to do, you follow up with doing it, and then you say to them, I'm not the sharpest guy, but I'll outwork people. And that's the truth. You campaign like you lead. Four thousand doors my campaign has hit. I've only seen one other candidate out on the streets, Klaus Halbschek. You campaign like you do the job. Commissioner Richardson didn't attend a meeting this morning. You paid for something that he didn't deliver.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to apologize to the league and the Albany County Public Library for my outburst. I believe you might have heard me say, "Come out and test my well." And the sheer fact of it is, and I'm going to talk about my well, I live out in West Laramie. We got hooked up to city sewer and water over 50 years ago, and it was because of a heavy nitrate problem. The drinking water was unsafe. We didn't know enough about the technology, how far to plant them, or any of those things. We know a lot more now. But 50 years later, my neighbor also has a well. He had it tested. It tested unsafe to drink. Those particulars don't go away. So we need to be proactive and not reactive. So not only protecting the aquifer, but also telephone canyon. There was a study back in 2008 that, and I'm not going to go into all the details of it, but it estimated if the aquifer got contaminated, we lost control of it. It was going to cost 30 million to build a, hook that part of the city up to city sewer and water, and 30 million to build a water treatment plant. Anybody want to guess what that's going to cost in 2022 dollars?
Thank you. Terry, it's to you now.
I want to make one thing really clear. There is not a militia in Albany County. And as far as what went on in West Laramie, yeah, the water table's very, very high there. And it's a totally different situation than what there is over the Casper Aquifer. And you've got to keep apples with apples and oranges with oranges.
You know, it's interesting about the clean water discussion. When we entered into the agreement with state lands to do the land swap that was privately funded, Pete voted against it every single time. He never voted for it once. And if Terry and I hadn't gotten it over the line, there'd be 7,000 acres up there that could, well, 5, 5,200 that could be developed. And I knew that that was the right thing to do because it takes away the public-private conflict when it's public land, right? And right now, the regulations that are coming, the challenge that, see, Pete said he would do things, and the problem is that he's done them. What's coming as far as regulation is, yes, you can develop, and here's how. And the here's how is so expensive that it ruins the proposition. And I think it's, we're going to wind up having to start buying land up there instead of doing privately funded land trades.
Thanks, Heber. Time, but I'm going to go back to the commissioners. And Klaus, this one is to you to start us. The county commission has been said to represent the people living outside of Laramie. Is this a fair characterization? And whether you think it is or is not, is it your view of what the county commission should do?
Well, I have lots of friends and customers that live out in the county. I actually went out to Rock River a couple of weeks ago, talked to some of the residents out there. I plan on going out to the county even more. And if elected, I should say, when elected, I also plan on listening to what the rural residents want. What I heard in 2018 out in Rock River was exactly the same thing that I heard in 2022, that the commissioners don't pay attention to them. They feel like the neglected stepchild. So they have every right to an education, they have every right to the quality of life, they have every right to the same health concerns that our local residents in this community have. So there is no difference whether you live in the city or in the county. Everybody should be treated the same. Now, services are cheaper to provide for county or city residents, you know, county residents that live in the city than it is for county residents that live outside of the city. That's just logistics. If I have a heart attack, it doesn't cost the ambulance as much to come to my house and take me to the hospital. But if a lady I met from Garrett out in Rock River has a medical emergency, that is a major expense. More than likely, it's not going to work out well if her husband has a heart attack working out in the field. The ambulance won't get there in time. So there are concerns, but Pete did a tremendous job working with the city and Sioux, getting the city to work with the county commission to provide EMS out into the county. Those are things that we need to continue to strengthen. We need to look at the county roads. I've heard an awful lot about that. I've also heard about development, again, I'll mention it, drilling into the wells and the aquifers and reducing the pressure. We've got to have smart development in the right location. You want to buy a $500,000 house, and five years from now, you have to haul in water because there's too much development there? We need to think about that.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, please, Peter? Please?
Yes, the question is, the county commission has been said to represent the people living outside of Laramie. Is this a fair characterization? And then whether you think it is or isn't, is it your view of what the commission should do?
Yes, well, if you live in Albany County, the county commission represents you. If you pay property taxes, those taxes are paid to the county treasurer. And so you should be represented by the county commission. We are in a strange Wyoming county, where 85% of the people who live in the county live in the incorporated areas. That's not standard. But I think you can do both things, right? I don't, I think you can chew gum and walk. I think there are some different things that each side has. I think, for instance, EMS was a really important piece. Making an EMS service that is high-quality, which it was, and ensuring the stability of that ensures that there'll be EMS services out to the county. Ask the folks in Fremont County if they can ensure that. I think working with the city, extending tax dollars is important, right? We have made great strides in making the efficient use of tax dollars because we work with people. I think when you go it alone, you go it alone. And I think that that's not smart government. I also think some of the confusion with Commissioner Richardson is he doesn't show up to know what the regulations are. And I think that's really important. You have to be there. You have to do the work, and that is not the case. And I would just not have you listen to me. Go to the YouTube channels. We have put all of the meetings on the YouTube. See when the meeting starts and see when Commissioner Richardson shows up. Those are not the same times.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
County commissioners represent everyone in the county. Everyone is our constituent, plain and simple. And I do know the regulations. And the fact that you haven't seen me on the street must mean that I am not there. I'm just not there because you haven't seen me.
I'm going to go to the sheriffs now, and I have--
Wait, just a second.
Gosh, Terry, sorry about that.
I didn't get to talk.
Your turn.
And Pete got after him for making snide remarks, and now Pete's making snide remarks. That's baloney. You know better than that, Pete, and that's enough.
Okay, speak into the microphone, please, and we'll take it from there.
I'll just leave that there. County commissioners represent each and every person in the county and the city, because the city is part of the county. And there are areas that everyone works very well together, and areas that are a little bit more dicey. But I believe, and have believed for a long time, that that can be resolved. One of the problems is, is that we have different jurisdictions. And when one group wants to step into the other's jurisdiction, that's when we begin to have problems. The county commissioners cannot get involved with the city's business because there is a thing called home rule, which keeps us out of the city. However, the city doesn't have that rule, and they certainly would like to run the county. And there is the rub.
We've gone our round. So I will move to the sheriffs now, and I have three questions for you gentlemen, and we'll do 30 seconds on each of them. How about that? So the first one, and I, will you remind me so I don't make a mistake? Who was the last one that began? You're okay? Aaron? Okay, we'll go with Aaron for the first one. So 30 seconds, with transparency being the word of the day. Would you support policies and/or budgets being published online for citizens to read?
Simply put, like I said, our policies are not published online, but they are public record, and the budget usually is published and is public record as well. And so I'm definitely in favor of both of those being available to the public.
Yes, I would. In this day and age, it's actually become pretty standard practice for agencies to publish both their budget and their policies on their agency website. And that should be the case.
Okay. Joel, you can hold on to that microphone because you can be first for this one. During the primary, candidates emphasized being community-based. What does that term mean to you?
To me, community-based, I mean, if you go back to Sir Robert Peel, over 200 years ago, he talks about how your law enforcement is part of your community first, and just selected to do the law enforcement part within your community. I think within the last, you know, 50 years, law enforcement's done a really good job of not being part of the community. We need to go back to being part of our community first before we're law enforcement. You know, I was up at Rock River last night, and it would have been great to see a deputy come in and watch that volleyball game.
Community-based means being involved in your community and also partnering with your community resources as well. And so that's what it really means to me, and that's what we've really tried to build since I've been sheriff, is trying to build those partnerships with other people in the community, show up at our meetings, at our coalitions, take in that input, make the changes needed so that we can better serve the public.
Great. And it occurs, you can be the first one on this one. It occurs to me this one may be outdated, but I'm going to give it a try anyway. How zealously should law enforcement and county attorneys pursue simple marijuana possession as a crime?
Marijuana still remains illegal, both possession and use in, you know, in Albany County and in the state of Wyoming. And I definitely think that law enforcement should definitely enforce the laws along with the county attorney's office, but make the best decision that's available for each individual case. Not every case is exactly the same. And so working together with both victims and suspects to find out what's the best solution in the criminal justice system.
Okay, great.
I mean, it's pretty simple. Marijuana is still illegal in Wyoming. It's still a state statute, and our deputies are expected to enforce all state statutes. The deputies do have individual discretion, you know, if the situation doesn't require that they write a citation, they don't have to. You know, obviously punishment for one person might not be appropriate in the next case.
Great, thank you. And we'll go back to the commission for the full 90-second questions. If I've got this right, Pete, you're going to lead us off here. Some primary, we're going to talk airport. Some primary candidates expressed confidence that the new airport board could be expected to fix problems. Explain your personal point of view on that.
Well, as a commissioner who oversees the airport as a liaison, and as a pilot, I have an interesting perspective on that. I think the new airport board had to be empowered. That airport was poorly managed and was not in compliance, and that is just the way it is. When you are out of compliance, carriers can't come in if the FAA says they can't come in, so SkyWest would not have been able to come in. So we have empowered people to do the work that needed to be done. We needed to do people who knew accounting, because the books had not been done for years. We needed people who knew HR, because many of the people were not trained in the places that they needed to be trained. And we needed people with a legal background, and all of those people were selected with those in mind. There'll be a day soon, I'm sure, when those people and the airport will be in a place where we feel much more comfortable about turning it back over to people who know a little bit more about flying than maybe they do. And that's important, but I think you get the safety first, especially with airports. I am grateful, as a pilot who still flies out of there, to have the oversight of the board and the administration out there. I know my fuel is without water now. It's really important come this time of year. And I think that is a really important, and I think that's one of the big changes at the airport.
Thank you.
It's interesting. I agree with Pete. That airport needed to be in triage in a whole bunch of ways. It's a great facility. The new terminal is great, and people like coming here, general aviation and passengers in the commercial flights. I don't, I think that the way it was before was loose enough, relaxed enough, that some people who were there a lot felt like it was their kind of like little man cave or something in it. And it wasn't professional, it wasn't serious, and it needed to be. And so some people resist change. They brought up a lot of issues that actually they sort of got smacked back on because they wanted it to be a certain way that it can't be. You know, that's, everything inside that fence is controlled by the FAA, and it has to be in compliance for it to be safe, and it is now. So for anyone who is upset by the changes, there was no choice. That's, the train was leaving the station, and that's how it had to be.
Thank you.
Would you repeat that, sorry?
Yes. Some primary candidates expressed confidence that the new airport board could be expected to fix problems. Explain your personal point of view on that, please.
Well, when you go into somewhere where there's water all over the floor, you get some people to come in and help you get that water cleaned up. And that's exactly what we had to do. I wasn't involved in that, but that's exactly what the county had to do, was to get the mess cleaned up, and they have. And they'll continue to work forward with it, and I would expect in the next year or so that we'll be with a regular operating board at the airport. And it's a wonderful facility, and we need to have it be used. So fortunately, we're up to snuff on everything and in good shape.
Thank you. Well, I would agree with Pete and Heber. It was a dire situation out there. We were going to lose FFA certification, so it had to be done. I'm not sure how oversight got-- I'm not sure how oversight got missed and it got that far behind the, the eight ball, so to speak, but the money that was spent to remodel the airport and the new boards that we have out there that are working to fix all the things, I think oversight needs to be maintained, but I do believe we're heading in the right direction. The airport is a wonderful resource, not only for the county and the city, but also areas around us. So yeah, I, I have confidence that we're heading in the right direction there, and we got the right people in the right place. And I have heard from people that we need more pilots on the board because they know more about flying and those kinds of rules and so on forth like that, but that time will come. This, this facility was injured, and now it's on its way to health. And I think we can all be proud of the facility that we have out there and the people that it'll bring into our community and hopefully the revenue it'll bring in, and hopefully it can be a shining example of how when things go sideways, they can be fixed. Unfortunately, it took a lot more money. The city and the county both had to add supplemental income into it to continue in the direction, but it was well worth it. And it is, again, a classic example of what the specific purpose tax, the six penny, can go towards, uh, as far as the building, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to the sheriffs. We got everybody on the commission, right? Okay. Uh, we'll go back to the sheriffs. Joel, this question is gonna be started off by you. Uh, it's from, from our audience. The city police department discussed aspects of an officer's misconduct investigation with the public last week. Should law enforcement misconduct records be made public? If the law gives you discretion, what misconduct records do you think should be publicly released or not?
Personnel records and disciplinary records are, cannot be released due to state statute, and that's the bottom line on that. However, law enforcement does a really good job of shooting itself in the foot by not putting out enough information. Um, specific to that incident where, where they discovered an officer had been on a list uh to oath keepers. I don't know the exact situation there, but there's a big difference between if you have an officer that joined oath keepers in 2020 because he wants to overthrow the US government and an officer that was walking through the park back in 2009, and there's a patriotic group there that asked him if he wanted to put down his email to receive a free t-shirt, and he later finds out that, oh, this is maybe not what I thought it was, and I might've ended up on a list, and goes to his administration and tells them what happened. It's two completely different situations. And I, I think that situation was probably closer to the young officer that was walking through the park. Otherwise, I don't think he would still be employed. I think if that's the case, the department needs to put forth more information to uh let the public know what the full circumstance is.
Thank you. Aaron?
In terms of disciplinary records, it's pretty clear in state statute that we can't release those. In terms of disciplinary action, uh, I think if there's a public interest with it, it's important for the agency to um let the public know, you know, wh- what that disciplinary action is. Since I've been in sheriff, you've seen a couple examples of that uh during my tenure with the resignation of, of one officer that had a troubled past, resi- uh termination of another officer that was um creating a, a toxic racist and homophobic and sexist environment within, within my department as well. And so um, we've been able to go ahead and, and get that information out without ha- giving all of the specific details within the personnel record and, and stay within our state statutes and, and like I said, make those things public so that the public knows uh what's going on with our department. We can uh maintain transparency and, and address those issues um if they come up.
Thank you. We'll go back to the commission. If I'm keeping track, Heber, this one is for you to start off. And let's just do one minute, and uh in deference to our League of Women voters, Lynn Epina, who likes this kind of question, a response to one word: windmills.
Windmills um are annoying to look at at night because they have lights on them. Fortunately, we have a regulation that says um that they have to use radar activated lights, but our regulation can't overrule the FAA. So um, they have artificial intelligence learning that knows the difference between trucks on the highway versus stuff in the air, and for a good portion of the night, they can not be lit up. Wind turbines are good in the sense that they give landowners the ability to have an alter- alternate source of income and stay doing ag. They also don't create a lot of jobs, which somebody might think is not a good thing, but it is a good thing because if we had a chicken slaughter plant built here, we would have to build schools, jail, water treatment, sewer treatment, hire, you know, law enforcement, all that kind of stuff. But when you have capital-intensive stuff, it feeds the sales tax and property tax base without creating a lot of demand on services.
Thank you.
Windmills mean a lot of different things to different people. I've had people ask me, well, what would you think if they were gonna put a wind turbine next to you? And I say, I gotta get used to it because that's their private property right. And on the flip side of that coin, if the government comes in and tells them they have to put a wind turbine on their land, I will be standing right next to them saying, uh-uh, uh-uh, it's their private property right. They have the right to say, no, I don't want wind turbines. So um, in not trying to repeat what Heber has said, I wanted to take a little bit different twist on that, that um, I think it, that they can increase uh revenue for the counties, revenues for the uh landowners, and um, and with all good things, there's some bad too. So that's it.
This is not gonna be a surprise. I'm a big-time supporter of windmills. I've written articles that have actually appeared in newspapers. I find windmills to be somewhat attractive. That might make me unusual. What I really also like about windmills is how it helps with the carbon footprint that we're uh doing with climate change and our environment. It is, whether we like it or not, the direction our nation is going. The federal government is putting a lot of resources and a lot of money towards developing renewable energy, windmills, solar, et cetera, but specifically windmills, and that is gonna make a big impact on the future of our nation. This is a question I need a lot more time for. I can talk for hours on this subject. But it is a wonderful development for our community, and every year, the science gets better and better. We now have the ability to install machine learning, cameras, smart cameras, computers that can actually control windmills when eagles are coming in. I know that that's a big concern with a lot of environmentalists. I'm an environmentalist. I don't like seeing eagle deaths, but it can be mitigated. There was a windmill out, a windmill farm out in western Wyoming that mitigated 84% of the eagle deaths. This is something we need to do.
Thank you. Pete?
This was a really difficult and challenging decision, rail tie windmills. I ha- I have to tell you, um, it is one that you think about a lot, and I think about it a lot because I do agree with people who were dead-set against it, right? That there was some site um and some outdoor activities and, and things that were gonna change for Albany County. And, and that, for me, couldn't be denied. But I think Albany County has always suffered from having a lack of resources. And here was an opportunity to move to the future, renewable technologies, and now have some money to solve some of those things that we've had a trouble with over the years: mental health, housing. Maybe, just maybe, we'll have that money to be able to do some things, big things, for our community. Um, and wouldn't it be great if we could get a community mental health center that could take care of people um and help keep people out of the sheriff's office, to keep people off the street, to keep people from being homeless? Um, I think those windmills represented to me an opportunity and, and a way to use the vision-
Thank you.
-and the money that comes from them for a future.
Thank you. Friends, I hate to say it, but we've come to 8:30. There's so many more good questions to ask. I wish we could stay longer and, and, and ask them. I wanna say thank you to the candidates for your candor, your passion, your willingness to put yourself out there, to the audience of citizens for being willing to get engaged, to the League of Women voters. Whether people here tonight heard stuff that they loved or heard stuff that they hated, I think the goal is that you should be informed when you come to cast your vote, and I hope we played a role in helping you get to that point. It's been my honor to be here. Thank you, and thanks to the candidates.
If you could see this, this mess up here, you'd know just how hard Peter has been working. I'll leave it alone, but I wanna add my thanks. Thank you all for having confidence in the League of Women voters, for coming here, for speaking your minds, for uh, um, for all of you in the audience for coming, for your friends who are gonna view it later. I can't tell you how much it means to me personally and to all the rest of the members of the League, whether they're here tonight or not. Can I just have the League members raise their hands so you know who you're thanking? Okay, thank you. I also didn't introduce um other candidates who might be in the audience or people who currently occupy an elected position. If you would, please, come up in front, and if you don't come all the way in front, folks at home viewing this can't see you. So please, come up and join me. Look at all those candidates. All right, so your name and the office you're running for and any other re-
Mark. Thank you. My name is Chelsea Matthews, and I am your current county assessor, and I am running this year.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Cumby, and I sit on city council.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sue Ibera, and I'm one of your county commissioners.
Hi, I'm Tracy Fletcher. I'm your current county treasurer, and I'm seeking reelection this year.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Gonzalez, and I'm your current Albany County clerk that will be retiring after this term. I just wanna say thank you for all the-
I don't know how to top that one. My name, my name is Brian Schuster. This is my 20th year on city council, but I have now seeking House District 14 is what I'm running for when I'm done with city council this year. So, thank you.
And for those, for those of you who couldn't see the audience, I want you to know there was a standing applause, and we probably would've stood for longer if we could have. Um, let's see, what else? I wanted to uh, um, oh, yes, remind you that we have more forums next week, and in particular on Wednesday. On Wednesday, we have House District 14, the county clerk race, and the county coroner race. So those are on Wednesday and Thursday. Next week, we have three more house districts, 13, 45, 46, and Senate District 9. And the last, but not least, of the forums will be on the Wednesday, the 26th. That's county assessor, county treasurer, clerk of court, county attorney, and anyone we may have missed um last night. All right, well, I think that's it. Let me again thank the library, thank you all. And I hope this forum tonight means that we can all listen to one another, we can all learn from one another. We always learn. We, the League, we always come away with something new. It just is irreplaceable, having you here versus on paper. So thank you again, a, a final round of applause. Now, we've got still 25 minutes for chatting. Stay around and chat.